I'd like to start by doing a little. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item here, and I may ask our clerk treasurer to help. We had a problem during the week of January fifteenth getting water from the city of Pan, and that's where our water comes from. And they had contacted, the town indicated that they were not able to deliver the amount of water we normally get, which is somewhere around twelve thousand gallons a minute, they were only able to deliver three hundred. So that's a substantial reduction. The Pepsi America was contacted. They're our largest consumer of water in the city, or the town here, I'm sorry. And they were more than willing to accommodate and assist us with that situation. And they actually shut down their operation, went to cleaning, and helped us out to keep water in the tanks and flowing freely. Ms. Wendy, I don't have that letter, but can you give the highlighting?
I can. The, the town council wrote the following letter. "We are writing this letter to express our appreciation for the responsible and proactive actions taken by PepsiCo America in response to the water supply challenges faced by the town of Munster on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. As you may be aware, the water inlet from Lake Michigan, which supplies Hammond and surrounding communities, including Munster, experienced freezing conditions. Munster was forced to implement water usage restrictions to ensure the conservation of this precious resource. Given that PepsiCo is the largest user of the water, of water in our town, your cooperation in reducing water consumption played a pivotal role in preventing the depletion of our water tanks. The, the decision to shut down the production line on January seventeenth and resume operations on January nineteenth at six a.m. demonstrated a commendable commitment to responsible water usage. By temporarily halting operations, you were able to save a significant amount of water, battling four hundred and three thousand gallons less than the usual production amount. This remarkable reduction greatly contributed to our efforts to conserve water in our holding tanks. Thanks to PepsiCo's willingness to collaborate with the community and take swift action, Munster residents and locals did not experience any reduction in water usage during this challenging period. Your initiative showcased a strong sense of corporate responsibility, environmental stewardship, and community partnership. On behalf of the residents of Munster, we send our sincere gratitude to PepsiCo North America for your understanding, cooperation, and commitment to sustainable practices. Your actions have not only safeguarded our community's water supply, but have also set a positive example for your responsible corporate citizenship. Sincerely, the Town Council, Town of Munster."
Thank you. Alrighty, that takes us up to public comments. We have that at the beginning of the meeting. We kindly ask all that in-person public comments is limited to two minutes maximum per person or five minutes for a group spokesperson. Please keep your comments civil and constructive and related to public policy issues. In the event questions are posed to the council, we will note your questions in the meeting minutes and we will refer them to the appropriate departments for staff follow-up and response. Public comments may be submitted electronically. If you have a question or comments about them, or about an item on the agenda that you would like to have entered into the meeting minutes, please email them the two, make the, email them that question. Comments to the clerk treasurer, Wendy Miss, at ms@munster.org. With that, I'm not sure how many people would like to come forward and make a comment, but I'd like to have it be orderly and constructive, and we would like to have their name and address for the record, please. So who would like to come up and make a comment?
Want me to sign the sheet too? Mike Dumovic, eighteen thirty-three Tulaplane. Two things. You need to make a correction to your minutes from the meeting of January eighth. I did not confirm the responsibility for removing the beavers from the creek. I asked the question about who was responsible, and I believe it was Dustin Anderson who responded that it was.
The county locale? Thank you, Mike. Go ahead.
Okay. Secondly, on the agenda, you have about approving and changing the time for the closing of Centennial Park. I would hopefully, or hope that you would approve that ten o'clock time. Dusk doesn't work. Dusk changes every day. And the other thing is, it's not consistently enforced at Centennial. I've been there past dusk, and then I've been there at dusk when they've come by, but all you see is maybe the blue light special going through, and they don't say anything, or if they do, if you're fishing in a certain area, you can't hear them. A set time would be the ideal thing, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Good evening. My name is Hoss Fademi. I live at nineteen oh one Fisher Street. What are the plans for backfilling the position of town manager? With a town of this size and complexity, it only makes sense to have the position filled with a dedicated full-time employee. As representatives of the town, I would hope the council members would communicate to Munster residents that the town manager position is not going to be backfilled. What reasons are there? What happens to the town manager's budgeted salary? Not having a town manager in Munster would be akin to not having the police chief for Munster PD. In regards to Resolution twenty-one twenty-three, why does it lean heavy into the idea of reduction in force? Are there plans to do mass layoffs of Munster employees? What would the town council need to, or why would the town council need to do this? There aren't any budget shortfalls that have been communicated to the town that I am aware of. Shouldn't any changes in personnel happen after a town manager is hired? So that person can make a proper strategic, strategic decision that could affect services to Munster residents. Without proper communication and transparency that everybody has talked about prior to the election and after the election, it will help, or it will actually prevent confidence in the residents of Munster to the abilities of the town council. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'm, I'm sorry. Speaker, what was your name again, please?
Hoss Fademi, nineteen oh one Fisher Street.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Stan Jayjack. I live in the four hundred block of South Street, Munster. And first, I'd like to say you're four new members. God bless you. Welcome. I wish you nothing but happiness, health, and a good term. With that being said, I got four or five things I'd love to talk to you about. I've got two minutes, so I'm leaving at one. About a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, you just had basically a non-trans merit meeting with people who were putting together proposed changes for Ridge Road. And I loved it when the man said it works great in Southern California. Take a look at Southern California, just wants to want to be like that. With that being said, once I read through documents that were put out by Munster Town of, Munster received seventeen point four million dollars for the new reconstruction of Ridge Road. With that being said, specifically to Mr. Schinkin, Mr. Hopper, Mr. Nellens, and Mr. Peterson, left you out, you ran unopposed, so you don't have to answer it, but I have one question. This is the platform you ran on. Do you plan on adhering to that platform? Or are we gonna look at money and just being saying, hey, we got the money, we gotta do something different with it? Take a look at our residential roads due to the traffic that's coming from NITD and RDA. Look at what's being proposed, high-rise housing. You can't even park in the northwest side of Munster, the north side of Munster, and the western side of Munster. Today, I was driving, and God bless the gentleman, he was not a young gentleman. He come across the street, don't stop at the street, rode his bicycle and looked at me while I was driving a pickup truck. I just want to ask a question. I got something left over here for you four gentlemen. Do you plan on adhering to the platform that you ran on? I would love a yes or no answer.
Oh, yes. We're not gonna reduce Ridge Road.
Is that true at all for you, John?
Yes.
Yes.
Would you hold up that mailer?
I'm sorry, sir?
Hold up that mailer, please. Hold up the mailer. What does it say?
It says, no lane reduction on Ridge.
Whose names are at the bottom of there?
Schinkin, Hopper, Nellens, and Peterson.
Peterson.
God bless you.
No lane reduction on Ridge Road.
Well, God bless you, sir. I'm asking that question for one simple reason, and I mean no disrespect whatsoever. I wish you nothing but health, happiness, and a good term.
Thank you.
And when I look at the other politicians, when money comes in there, things go away. And I thank you all, folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Scott Mason, eight six three nine Holman. Later today, you guys are gonna be discussing the Westland Bennett terms. I ask that you guys table that based on these couple of reasons. Number one, it says two hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. That's the partner rate. They're a full-service law firm with paralegal as well as an associate. We want the associate to be shown up to court calls, but not at two hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. Having worked in self-insurance for roughly twenty years, which is exactly what Munster is, at two hundred and twenty-five dollars for a partner, that's typically around a hundred and eighty. A paralegal is even less. We want a paralegal to be calling people for, say, I don't know, your deposition is tomorrow at ten a.m. We don't want to be paying at two hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour on that. Secondly, the, the biggest one that I found was the line about paying all costs. That should state that it should be reasonable and subject to bill review. You don't want to have to be paying for redundant work or anything like that, catch-up or anything like that. There are a few others, but those are the two main reasons why I think you guys should table until it gets more clarity on it. Thanks.
Ryan Dean, eighty-two twenty-two, White Oak Avenue. I strongly oppose as written Resolution two-one-two-three. Sole decision-making should not be left to only the town council president under any circumstances. There should be no language in a resolution for a reduction in workforce. The only reason I would see this to be implemented is to keep a campaign promise while hurting the services in the town that the residents rely on daily. A reduction in workforce should only be thoughtfully considered after a town manager is hired, who has a strong background in public policy, is revealing staffing levels, any determines if there are any redundancies, inefficiencies, and/or lack of funds, none that I am which aware of. Public employees should not be used as pawns who now have to worry if their job is safe and sets up a dangerous precedent that every four years, they may lose their jobs. Additionally, the town is owed an explanation if, if the reason for Dustin Anderson was terminated was due to illegal circumstances, such as embezzlement that was suggested by some of the members of the current council. These are serious accusations and cannot be stayed without thoroughly being investigated. I would like to believe the town council reviewed all paperwork before making such inflammatory remarks.
Thank you.
Hello, Steve Tludzki, eighty-eight North Cod Avenue. Couple of the comments today have made reference to the resignation or the fact that you need to have a new town manager. So I'm hoping in some of the discussion that you can illuminate maybe what were some of the rationale that went behind that. It seems surprising to many people, myself included, that thirty-three, thirty-three days into office, you would have had the experience to know that this was not the right town manager for us. I'm kind of shocked by that. And I hope you can be open and transparent about what you're looking for in a town manager, how you'll do that replacement. It is one of, if not the most consequential, consequential roles in the town supporting residents. So the more open that you can be, the maybe calmer the conversation can get about how we're going to be running the government. I don't think people have voted for a fundamental change in the form of government. We don't have a mayor, we don't have an elected mayor. So it's at least my expectation that we continue with the town, town manager and the council as has been the, the case throughout the history of the town. So looking forward to hearing more about, you know, what's going on in, in all of your decision-making.
I ask you a question. You were on the town council. Why didn't you give him a contract four years ago?
Excuse me, Mr. President, is this our time to ask?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry about that, same.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, to answer that question. But it was a matter of, a matter of executive session, which you've just had, so you know I'd be out of order if I were to say anything about that.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Sure.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mitch Barloka. I live at nineteen hundred Bluebird Lane, and I am a proud new resident of Munster, although I've been a region resident for many years. I work at Northwest Indiana Regional Planning Commission. And my main job there is to help with bicycle and pedestrian safety. I know this council ran successfully on the idea of, of the Ridge Road project. I will simply state that that project, as designed and as proposed and as funded at a seventeen-plus million dollar amount, is a very good project for this community, and I fully support it. I support it for the safety it'll provide for, for bicycle and pedestrians in this community, for the enhancement of a district near a new transit station, and the amount of popularity and the destination it'll become for the town of Munster. I know change is not easy, but these standards have proven to save lives where they have been employed, to slow down traffic, and to make it safer for bike and pets. So I appreciate your consideration going forward. There is time to work on this grant if you want changes. There's a few more years here. Trust me, I do know how to work these grants, so I hope we can work together going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
David Seep. Yeah, I was excited, John, you're gonna speak. One of these days.
We're still in the open to the public session. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Anyone else that'd like to come forward to open to the public session here at the council meeting? Seeing no one, I will close the open to the public session. And that takes us to the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented and as corrected by Mr. Dumit.
We have a second?
Second.
And a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. Ms. Wendy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes.
Takes us up to old business. And we have no old business at this time. Takes us up to new business. Item number eight, separation agreement. Give a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of town manager Dustin Anderson and to approve the separation and release agreement executed by Mr. Anderson on January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four.
We have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a comment. The position of the town manager is one of the most thankless jobs in town government. For the past four years, I had the pleasure of working with Dustin Anderson. Throughout this time, I've seen Dustin invest his energy and efforts in making Munster a better place to live. Recently, I, along with other members of the council, received over twenty-five letters of support for Dustin. While each letter was unique in its own right, there was a common theme. Dustin was helpful and assisted many residents, provided feedback, supported the town, and was a professional, professional, knowledgeable, generous public servant with his time in many public positive attributes. While Dustin has been a catalyst for many town accomplishments over the past nine years, one needs to be high-level. His work and dedication to the Forty-Fifth Street Underpass Project was outstanding. The ability to coordinate the multi-jurisdictional alphabet funding model of NERC, INDOT, and, and the RDA greatly reduced the cost of the town of Munster, provided unbelievable amenities to the town of Munster, and brought this project to the finish line under budget. With this being said, I, I do accept his resignation and in support of the separation agreement in order for our town to come together and move forward. I further support and look forward to working with my fellow town, town counselors, town staff, and you, the residents, to start the search for a new town manager that will professionally lead us to a great future.
Thank you, Counselor Gardner. Any other comments? Seeing no other comments, I'll ask clerk treasurer for the vote.
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. That takes us up to item B, Resolution twenty-one twenty-two, authorize signer for INDOT business.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two, a resol, a resolution authorizing the town council president to execute contracts and documents for INDOT.
I second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Further discussions? And again, I would just like to comment that this is only for that particular contract opportunity, and it will come across each contract that we brought to the council meeting and reviewed and set up for authorization if we're going to approve it. Please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. Takes us up to item C, Resolution twenty-one twenty-three, authorizing the town council president in executive staff changes. And I just wanna just comment on that, that is something that would be approved by the council based on any need to exercise those options. We have a motion?
Mike, are you gonna make all the motions?
I'll, I'll look to approve Resolution twenty-one twenty-three as presented.
We have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I think at the time when we have changed in our leadership of town manager position, I think that's where the, the history of Munster being, having solid, professional, staff-driven government is very important. I believe that the town council should be looking at a visionary leadership role in this situation. And I think right now we should be working, focusing on that leadership and envisionary process rather than creating distractions for our employees. Staff changes should be careful and cautious. I think after this short period of time, especially without the proper type of communication we've had with some employees, I believe that this resolution is not a good resolution to have.
Any other comments?
Mr. President, I'm gonna weigh in here. I'm an attorney in my private practice. And with the absence of a town manager, the town of Munster lacks any suitable authority to address employee concerns. And yes, we've had meetings in executive session to discuss this. I think it's appropriate to appoint you as council president to fill that gap in one minute. I echo what Councilman Gardner says. We want professional leadership here. And I think this resolution today provides that measure of professional leadership that the town expects. And for that reason, I will vote in favor of that resolution.
Any other discussion, comments? Seeing none. Ms., Ms., would you please call the roll?
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
No.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. Takes us up to item number D, Police Department remediation. They had a sewer backup over there. And we're looking for payment on this.
Mr. President, I would make a, a motion to confirm approval of the proposal from Century Roofing in an amount not to exceed one thou, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and eighty cents, and to pay the current Century Roofing invoice in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars.
Second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further comments?
I would just like to compliment the clerk treasurer for her work in putting this number together. It's a pretty confusing topic. I do appreciate, or our controller for bringing this, excuse me. The controllers for putting this number together. Very well put together. Thank you. Sorry, controller.
And this was a long time coming. You have your floors.
Any other comments? I would just like to say I've taken a walk over there, walked around. My compliments to Nancy for picking out the colors. And it's always painful when you have an accident like this and then get it cleaned up and then go through the remediation. You have to move. They just can't put the flooring under the desks as it sits. So I wanna compliment the police staff for helping, being there to assist with the contractors to get things moved and then back into place and getting their computers all set up. But it really does look nice. So with that, Ms., Ms., would you please?
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes.
Five zero.
Item number E is for Public Works, purchasing a, for the street division, a four-by-four dump truck with a plow, salt spreader, and it comes from Bozak Ford, was the quote. By recalling this, if it's accurate, it was about a one-year delivery, so this was ordered some time ago, and it has finally come in and is ready for delivery.
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we approve the purchase of a two thousand twenty-three Ford F-550 dump truck. It's a Ford at a cost of sixty-one thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars, minus the trade-in value of twenty-five thousand dollars. And a snowplow and salt spreader from W.A. Jones for a cost of sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars, for a total overall cost of a hundred and six thousand dollars, one hundred and six comma, one hundred and eighty-two dollars. Funny you say that. Hundred, it's six thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars. Sorry, we did. Sorry, chief.
That's not small potatoes.
I'll second that motion, sir.
Alrighty, thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. I would like to make a comment that it's always in our I would like to make a comment that it's always in our policy, my policy, to make sure we have the right tools, right equipment for the right job. Munster has stand, has stood the test of time as far as having their street plowed. We're complimented throughout the county, Northwest Indiana, over the good things that we do. And in order to do that, you have to have the right equipment. And I certainly wholeheartedly support this particular truck to add it to our fleet. Wendy?
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
And Counselor Nellens?
Yes.
Five zero.
Alright, that takes us up to item number F, which is the Trulock Agreement. And Wendy, is that something you would?
This is for the, how to put it? It's the, thank you, that's, I couldn't think of that. The time lapse camera and it's pointed at the, and it's actually up and running right now because the sun is shining. It hadn't been for a while and actually I will be virtually, but it's pretty cool. I did look at it over the weekend. And it will help us track the construction project on Forty-Fifth Street where they're doing the new train station. So the camera's up and this will give us twelve months' worth of watching the station being announced.
The website or the address that we find this at?
We'll be able to, I'm going to have it put on the town website. I haven't just yet, it hadn't been operational. But just because we can, this is what this looked like when they were doing the Forty-Fifth Street underpass and it was kind of cool.
So it's the fast time lapse and it makes you see what happened.
Yeah, it probably wasn't the best one to look at, but yeah.
Okay.
Alright, we have a motion?
I would make a motion to approve payments at Trulock for a cost not to exceed four thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars per day of hosting associated with the track and terminal station construction of the NITD Westlake Extension.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Again, I think it's, it is very interesting to see. There's a lot that goes into these projects. So alright, Ms. Wendy, if you would call the vote?
Alright, Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
And Counselor Nellens?
Yes. Item number G is Impact Contact Revision, Contract Revision. We need to true up with them with the number of devices that we have. And this is a request to true that up and pay some additional money.
Yeah, this is an update, our revise our monthly invoice to Impact.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the monthly invoice for Impact, not for the Matic Cost Not Big C, fifteen thousand, six hundred and thirty and six one cents.
We have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second, is there further discussion?
Do we know when our Impact license expires?
It's this, I believe it's this year, but we always have a thirty-day out.
Is this something that we have a staff, a group of staff members working on, reviewing? This, I know it's been, it's been an issue for some time. Do we have, is this an issue that the staff is looking at at this time?
I'd say yes, it is.
Okay.
It is so.
Or at least are we documenting the issues that we're having with Impact?
Yes, I have a meeting with them this week.
Oh.
Okay, on the list and adopted. Any other questions? Certainly, we want to hold them tasked and make sure they deliver things as agreed upon and we'll go from there. Alright, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes.
Five zero.
Alright, item number H is the twenty-twenty-four update on Centennial Park Hours.
This is a request and it was approved by the Park Board. They would like to extend the hours at Centennial Park from its current six AM to dusk to six AM to ten PM. We talked to council earlier this afternoon and we need an ord, we will have, if council is agreeable to this, we will have an ordinance at the February nineteenth meeting that we will move forward with this. But we first wanted to make sure that council wanted to move forward. But the Park Board would like to see it at Centennial Park.
Would you like to see a motion to change the hours at this meeting?
Yeah, to, yeah, so that we can move forward with the ordinance, to see the ordinance at the next one. So it's just a step one.
So we're be authorizing?
The ordinance.
The order, okay.
Yes, thank you.
I would like to make a motion that we authorize the change in daily park operation hours at Centennial Park to six AM to ten PM. And that we approve the necessary ordinances for the next meeting. I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there further discussion? Seeing none?
Counselor, sir, Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes.
Five zero.
Alright, that takes us up to item number I, the well, the well field balancing proposal, Centennial Park landfill.
This is an increase in price that we need, we need as we continue to monitor the well field at the landfill. And that this needs to come before council.
Alright, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the attached proposal dated November twentieth, two thousand twenty-three from Kavanaugh Environmental Field Service for one monthly balancing at two thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars per monthly to monitor the monthly well fields at Centennial Park landfill and the time and material for any repairs at various rates that are listed that are beyond the monthly scope.
We have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Again, these well fields are required to monitor them, I think basically as long as we have that landfill, to make sure we don't have any leakage or anything coming out from that particular insulation. Ms. Wendy?
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes.
Five zero.
Alright, item number J. Community Crossing match and grant, change number three, memo and change order.
Yeah. Just the balancing of the work done for the paving and water main improvements at White Oak, Camelia, and Beverly. The community crossing Twenty-two dash two project.
Okay. I'll make a motion to change order number three to the contract for the paving and water main improvements, White Oak, Camelia, and Beverly, CCMG twenty-two point two, in the amount of five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-nine cents.
I'll second that.
Alright, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion, questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote.
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. That takes us up to item K, Public Works Additional Cost for New Tandem Axle Dump Truck. And
and this is one that was ordered two years ago, or no, this took two years.
Yeah, yeah. Will I make a motion? Sure, okay, I'll make a motion to approve the total additional cost of twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-one and thirty cents for a new total cost of two hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven and thirty cents to Rush Truck Center for the purchase of a new twenty-four tandem axle dump truck, unit number three-three-six.
We have a motion, we have a seconds?
I second that.
Alright, further discussion? I just want to mention that as much as these trucks cost, part of it is we ask when they're out there working to give them plenty of clearance, back away from them when they're spreading salt or plowing, because it's a two-way street. We don't want to damage your car and we certainly don't want to damage the truck. We want it to be able to continue on the road and maintaining our highways, so. Any other discussion? Seeing none?
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. That takes us up to item number L, there we go, item number L. This is the East Forty-Fifth Street Paving, Release of the Final Retainage. And that's with Milestone, Milestone, and we have an invoice here.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve final release of retainage for the East Forty-Fifth Street Paving Project, a milestone amount of fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine and sixty-seven cents.
We have a motion, we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion?
I would just like to send a big shout out to the staff for working on that project. That was a project. After the West Forty-fifth Project was done, we had some issues. They were quick to respond, quick to add, quick to find additional work to be done, that was with the water main break. And everything was very seamless. There's a lot of coordination with that project. And I really reach out to the staff for that, doing a great job.
I'll certainly echo that since they did a terrific job. Those are, they take a while to get done. And when we are all done, it's certainly good, but during the route getting there, it can be very difficult. Alright, no further comments? Call for a vote?
Counselor Schinkin?
Yeah.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. Okay, item number M is twenty-twenty-four Lake Pond Ditch Maintenance. And this is with Aquatic Control Contract. And they pull the pumps, they do the fountains, and also add treatment as is necessary to maintain the ponds with the algae and also any insects.
Mr. President, for clarity's sake, I am the president of White Oak Woods Condom Williams. One of the ponds located around where I would characterize our property, so I will recuse myself in this.
Alright, we have a motion?
I guess I'll make a motion to approve the aquatic control proposal, three-seven-five-nine-one-five, dated one-eleven, twenty-twenty-four, for the twenty-twenty-four Custom Vegetation Management Program in amount of twenty-six thousand, one eighty-five and fifteen cents.
We have a second?
A second.
Alright, any further comments, questions?
The only comment I would have is, last year, we had a number of issues during the summertime with the community estates subdivision pumps. And the riprap around that, I would just ask that staff is cognizant of that back and then we can get an early jump on the community estates area, especially the riprap.
Good comment, anything else? Again, we need to have this service to keep things running properly. And I think we found this vendor to be very reliable, very responsive. Ms. Wendy, would you call the vote?
Counselor Schinkin?
Oh, yeah.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Stay.
Thank you. Counselor Nellens?
Yes. Alright, that takes us up to item number N, which is the Westland Invented Attorney Fee Hourly Rates.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion at the enter into agreement with Westland Invented to represent the town of Munster as attorneys at a rate of two hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second, is there further discussion?
Mr. President, during public comment, there was a very thoughtful comment made by a member of the public regarding these fees. And as practicing attorney, I did not find anything wrong with this. But I think it would be appropriate for, for Mr. Westland to offer some comments. Specifically, one of the concerns that was raised by the resident was that this fee, it was a fee being paid to associates. And the nature of this fee in relationship to what would otherwise be considered retail attorney fees. I'm wondering if Mr. Westland offered this thought sometimes.
Sure, so.
If I played use a microphone, girl, I thought, I'm sorry.
All these years, we can't figure out the mic. Our typical rates are significantly higher than two-point-five, both for partners and associates, so for clients. So the fee reflected in the engagement letter is a discounted rate from both our associates who charge as well as our partners. And that's why we gave the one flat rate overall, as opposed to, so I suppose you're getting a deeper discount when it's Nicole or I. But, but it is discounted overall. In terms of the comments regarding reasonable expenses, I think my counter would get around here. We don't pass along expenses that aren't reasonable. I wouldn't incur an expense that wasn't reasonable. And if there's an extraordinary expense, a litigation expense or whatever, typically we get prior approval before we incur those expenses and pass those along.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. West, thank you.
Thank you. I would also, a number of years ago, we did review different attorney rates. And there are certain attorneys that will charge towns two different rates, a litigation rate and a regular rate. And the litigation rate is much higher. We also found through the Centennial Park litigation that Mr. Westland's rate is very appropriate.
Alright, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, call for a roll, please?
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. Alright, that takes us up to item O, which is engagement letter from David P. Wicklin, attorney, and his hourly fees. And he handled the, some of the boards and commissions that we have.
Mr. President, I would make a motion, we enter into a letter of agreement with Mr. Wicklin, attorney at law, to serve and represent the town of Munster Plant Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, Parkport, and the Hammond Sanitary District through two thousand, or through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. President, again, I wish to respond to that very thoughtful comment by Munster resident regarding the fees. And I don't think if Wicklin was here, but as a practicing attorney, I am aware that the fee that's being offered is substantially discounted from what would otherwise be considered a retail fee that would be charged by an attorney of Mr. Wicklin's experience. And as a result, I think it is, it is consistent with the fees that are being offered by that are being offered by, from Westland and Bennett, and I, I'm very appreciative of the fact that Attorney Wicklin has similarly provided the discount to us that substantially lower than what we'd be paying for retail.
Any other comments, questions?
I would just like to also offer that Attorney Wicklin, we are entering this agreement until the end of two thousand twenty-four. There was some question at the last meeting that he was only going to be on for two to three months. Counselor Peterson and myself met with Attorney Wicklin, and this is now through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
I thank both of you for doing that, setting that up. Any other comments, questions? Ms. Wendy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to ordinance nineteen thirty-two, it's the first reading additional appropriation.
Ms. Abbott.
Ms. Abbott.
This ordinance is to authorize additional appropriations in two funds. When a budget is put together, it's certified at a certain amount, and then if the need is discovered and if funds are available, council can go through a process where they can get additional appropriations, and that's what this ordinance is asking you to do. It's for two funds, one is the tip allocation fund, and the other is the parkland escrow. In both funds, there's more than enough cash to cover this request for basic permission to spend those dollars if you want, they're both contracts that have already been let underway.
President, I'll make a motion to, on first reading, approve ordinance nineteen thirty-two.
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second, further discussion? I'm just gonna say, Ms. Abbott's approval and have assistance with state of Indiana is something, is something they require, and not all states do import the issue. But this is what we have to do.
This is the process we have to follow in Indiana, and there will be at your next meeting a public hearing, which is also a requirement, and they'll finally adopt it. Ordinance, at which point, the appropriation will be in effect.
Attorney West?
Mr. President, I just want to make sure that I have the intent of the, of the motion. If it's your intent to approve this on first reading tonight, then I need it. The first motion would be to consider it on first reading tonight, the second motion would be to adopt. The way it was written in the memo is a little confused, well, not, I wasn't sure, based on the reading of the memo and the motion, what exactly, so I want to be clear for the rest of the way.
I think we intended to do this on a two reading.
Two readings.
So this is, the motion is to approve this on a first reading.
Schedule a public hearing.
Sir, sir, President, how do you like the word?
Schedule a, schedule a public hearing.
Okay.
February nineteenth. Hear the ordinance on first reading, and schedule a public hearing for February nineteenth.
So I make a motion to hear the ordinance nineteen thirty-two tonight, and schedule for a public hearing at the next town council meeting that you scheduled for February nineteenth.
And a second reading.
And second reading.
Second reading, second at that time.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, any further discussion, questions? Seeing none, we can call the votes?
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. Okay. Item number Q, which is ordinance nineteen thirty-three, first reading budget reduction, and Ms. Abbott will help us with this.
This is kind of the opposite of the previous ordinance that we just listed too. We, when the budget got certified at the beginning of the year, we reviewed all of our funds to see where they were, and if they can support the full budget that was contemplated at the, when they were adopted back in October. And we have a list of funds here that we feel they need to take a reduction in order to remain balanced and to meet their reserve. They're listed there. Municipal Surtax, the Electric Fund, Water Cash Operator, Solid Waste Management. We believe we can still accomplish the goals that council has, it's just we need to take a reduction at this time.
So the way this works is we send our budget requests downstate to the municipal, they look at it, and it can come back with a reduction?
The, the funds that are being contemplated here are not being reduced because of the state. These are home-ruled funds that council has authority over. We've just reviewed them, because when the budget is put together in October, we're making assumptions about how much will be spent to the end of twenty twenty-three. In January of twenty twenty-four, we know exactly how much cash we've had, and how much we can support in the coming year. So that's why we're asked, we're asking for this reduction in the coming year, because we don't have the cash we anticipated. Okay.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to hear proposed ordinance nineteen thirty-three for budget reductions on first reading, and schedule second reading for February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further comments, questions? In some ways, this is a housekeeping matter, but I don't want to take it lightly, because our controller does a next one job, and watches and monitors all these things, and keeps us in compliance, and we appreciate everything that she does in our third treasure. They're always on their toes. With that, I will ask for a vote.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. Any reports tonight? Any portfolio reports? Announcement, all town council meetings will begin at seven PM, unless otherwise noted. Our next meeting is February nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular town council meeting and regular redevelopment commission.
Before we close this meeting, I have one announcement.
Sure.
A couple days ago or so, there was a social media post, Chief Sheklo Snubber in his thirty-fifth year on the police force here in Munster. Thank you, chief, for that thirty-five years. Also, as I was looking at public safety, we have a number of police off, or fire department personnel that have been here more than thirty-five years, like to recognize them also. Chris Golding, Kevin Novacek, Mark Hydup Jr., Kevin Heggie, Jose Serrano, Ron Zvedek, and Fred Herman Sr. Like to thank all those people that are part of the public safety area for all their years of dedication and service to town Munster.
Make motion to adjourn this meeting.
A second.
Do you want to call the roll or voice?
I don't, you can do a voice vote for that one.
All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, that concludes our town council meeting. We'll go right into our redevelopment commission meeting, the regular meeting for February fifth. John, how are you?
Good.
Take this down.
Yeah.
All right, I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Have you taken the roll yet?
Commissioner Schinkin.
Here.
Commissioner Hopper.
Here.
Commissioner Gardner.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Nellens.
Here.
And our liaison to the school board, John Hill.
You know, school board member John Castro is always regular, he's always here, and we appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much.
All right, we'll open up the, open to the public comments. This has the same regulations and comments as the main meetings, so if anyone would like to come forward and speak at public comment here for the redevelopment commission, you're certainly welcome to come forward, state your name and address. All right, is anyone interested in coming to the, open to the public session here for redevelopment? Seeing no one, I will close the open to the public comment that takes us to the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to accept, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any questions, comments? Seeing none?
Commissioner Schinkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nellens.
Yes. We have no old business, no new business, any reports, no announcements, looking for an adjournment. I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, there.
Students, any pictures, come up here quick, and we'll get picture taken.
Yes.